Wednesday, September 29th, 2021. Do we have a quorum? Looking here. I think so. I can't, my view of this, of this WebEx all the time is very scant. I can't really tell who's on there unless I do a bunch of.
I see we have a quorum.
Okay, all right. So if you, if staff would begin the recording, we will open council time for Wednesday, September the 29th, 2021. And I would entertain a motion for minutes from our September 22nd meeting.
I'll move to approve, Madam Chair.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the September 22nd meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, may I possibly ask Kathleen a question? Am I logged on twice? I have a terrific echo.
I believe you are. Let me take a quick look because we can't see your.
Can you lock me out of one? Because I can't see both.
Let me check.
I'm sorry. I'm just checking for an echo again. I still have it. Can't even understand.
Well, I think you're now logged on just once. I think staff was able to kick you off on the other one, so.
I'm in a test and I hear it. No echo. Thank you very much. I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's very good. Echoes are very hard to deal with. So anyway, thank you all. All right. The other 1.2 rules and procedures. Let's begin our discussion about that. I think we all have a copy of the proposed changes. And do, who would like to present?
I'll just say Lindsay did provide the updates for your discussion last time. And we tried to highlight anything that was changed prior than, between the last meeting and now, so that you know what was changed. So you don't necessarily have to review all the edits. So hopefully all those were highlighted and that could help guide your discussion.
Okay, thank you. So let's look at the first one then, which is on page, is it page two? One? This is page one. Any questions or comments on that one? Actually, we're updating the date on the cover page. But it would be section three, a letter D. And Lindsay, do you want to, would you step in here and make comments on any of these changes?
Sure. So in this section on letter D, this is just the discussion that we had regarding the vice chair and the clarifying language about, you know, the unexpired term and the fact that the charter doesn't have a term per se, but says the vice chair will be elected annually. So this is just that verbiage change.
Any comments for the council? Moving on then to the next change, which is section five, special meetings. And it's called, we've taken all of that out, I see, and replaced it with RCW 4330 oh zero, oh, excuse me, 080.
Right. So this just provides the full statutory authority for the things you're allowed to call special meetings for.
Okay, and then changing from council to board.
Yeah, so just, so anything that's in black was actually already approved by the council prior to this last year. Anything in red has been updated based on the February work session on the council priorities. And then anything highlighted again was just a change in the last week.
Okay, Lindsay, why don't you just let us know each, tell me the page, and I'll let you lead this and I'll ask, you know, if counselors have comments and questions, all right?
So Rebecca or Kristen, who's controlling it, just scroll down one by one to the highlighted next ones. But this one is just a grammatical change. That's just going from meeting agenda to meeting agendas. Go ahead and scroll down to the next page. So this page, we had talked about in the last meeting specifying the Tuesday meetings as opposed to other meetings. And so that's what you see here in the three sections that translate it to the Tuesday meetings. The other, there's a structural change in terms of combining one of the sections. That's why you see the C crossed out and highlighted there to combine those two sections. And then, of course, the red highlighted that except is provided in the county charter. That accounts are putting something on the meeting agenda will take the item to the council chair. Because of course, there are provisions within the charter for different things. And we can't supersede the charter with the rules of procedure. So that's all that it is on this page. It's primarily that Tuesday clarification.
Any comments? That's, that's fine. Go ahead.
Just a question on this. And so as it pertains to Wednesday meetings of the council, if a counselor wishes to have a, an item removed from that consent agenda or changed in some way on the agenda, nothing in this section applies, correct?
Correct. And we don't have a consent agenda for the Wednesday.
Well, I shouldn't have said, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said consent agenda, but there's things like, for example, in D, where the county manager has authority to place ordinance resolutions and so on. Does that authority not extend to Wednesday meetings?
So this rules of procedure says that the county manager has the authority to do that. It doesn't apply to the Wednesday meetings right now. Any counselor can put anything on the Wednesday meetings. And as we talk, Kathleen, you look like you were going to say something.
So for the Wednesday meetings, I think that is covered in E, which is why it does not call out Tuesday. While the ordinances always are on a Tuesday meeting, the charter does provide some provisions in section 8.2 of the charter regarding people putting on the ordinance for Wednesday meetings, which I believe would fall under E. It takes the item to the council chair with at least one other counselor. So if a counselor wants to add an agenda item to a Wednesday meeting, they need to have support of one other counselor and then present that to the chair. And that's how we've been operating under this for the last couple of years at least.
That answers your question, Councilwoman.
Uh, no. I mean, I, I, I hear you and I understand. However, if we pop back up to A, we're referring, it seems, in this section to Tuesday meetings. A is Tuesday meetings. C and D specify Tuesday meetings. Maybe even we should specify all meeting agendas or Tuesday and Wednesday meeting agendas, so that it's clear.
And another suggestion that you might want to consider is we could split E into two because ordinances, like I said, don't go on Wednesdays. So that except is provided in 8.2 of the charter, which is specific to ordinances, would be for a Tuesday meeting and then have a different section just for Wednesday. That would say with the agreement of the two counselors going to the chair to add agenda items.
That's clear. That's good.
So then E would be one, number one and number two, or?
E would be except is provided in 8.2 of the county charter for a counselor seeking to put, and maybe it's an ordinance on the Tuesday meeting. Or we'll reference it. We can write the thing, but it's really just called the Tuesday agenda. And then, you know, and it might be, I don't want to remember all of this. It just has to have a standalone and maybe we do it at the end of all the Tuesday references and then have the standalone letter saying on Wednesday's agendas, the two counselors. So we can, we can get that cleaned up.
So that would be M, I guess, letter M. But I think that's a good suggestion that we do, because we do have meetings on Wednesday. Every Wednesday. Oh, no, not M. There's M N O. Yeah, yeah.
The letter P.
All right, sorry. Okay.
Moving on. So the change here in the executive session section is just saying, it's just a clarification that executive sessions, because the language says at the end of the executive session, the council must reconvene in a regular session. And so I added if action is necessary, because otherwise you don't need to reconvene. And then on the meeting minutes, this describes the individuals that are present and whether their absence is excused or unexcused. And that the meeting minutes will include the, essentially a roll call of the individuals present.
I have a quick question for legal on the executive session language about just coming back to reconvene in a regular session if action is necessary. My assumption is if there is no action, that we will make the adjournments before going into executive session or make it very clear before we exit that following executive session, we will adjourn to avoid any openness and make sure that we're following the state orders office.
That's my understanding, Kathleen, is that if we announce that the meeting will be adjourned after executive session with a time provided and that there will be no action to follow if that's adequate. However, that's an issue that we can follow up on and confirm.
And maybe clarify too, that, you know, when we call these executive sessions ordinarily, if there is action required, it's announced at that time as well. So I, I don't know whether that has to be a part of it or if this just takes care of it. Maybe you check on that just to make sure we're completely in line even with the language here. It was prestigious.
Well, and just for clarity, what you stated, Kathleen, would be an easy sentence to add in there about the announcement that is made. And what is included in that announcement and then it's clear. Yeah, I like that.
I think we can scroll down. So this is, these are just clarification changes of adding the 15% and spelling out the word 15% and then clarifying the code of ethical conduct and the code of professional conduct.
Any comments or questions on that? I, I mean, I expect counselors, if you have questions or comments, that, that you will speak up. I can't, you know.
I'm almost there, Madam Chair. I'm just waiting for what we're about to get into.
Okay, all right. Okay, moving on to this next section, Lindsay.
So this is where, of course, there's some significant changes. The code of ethical conduct that is here is coming in large part from the Pierce County. And so this is what we, we had talked about. If we could scroll down just a little bit so we could see. So this is just the principles of the code of ethical conduct. And kind of, we had talked about actually putting the statutory reference from RCW 4223 into the code of ethical context. So that's what this is. It's just the language from the state statute.
Questions or comments on this? I, I think it's an important distinction. And so thank you for having that.
So this is the section here that council had discussed at the last meeting regarding absences of the county counselors. And what this section describes is kind of a general duty to fulfill the obligations of the office. But then also saying that, you know, if a counselor is absent or unexcused for four more consecutive weeks of council meetings, the intent there is to mirror what is in the state statute related to the 30 days. Because of course, the, the reason that I wrote it this way and the council can write your rules of procedure, of course, however you want, but you are a part-time counsel. And so what constitutes 30 days? Are, you know, Thursdays, Fridays, other days considered workdays? If you miss a Thursday or Friday, is that an absence? How do we count weekends? Generally speaking, if it's more than two weeks, you count the weekends. So you just get into some of these sort of unclear questions as opposed to looking specifically at a roll call of meetings and whether somebody was absent and considered unexcused. This section also describes what constitutes an unexcused absence as opposed to an excused absence. And again, this was just, you know, general provisions that we have in other areas of employment law in terms of providing notice to employer as reasonable as practicable. And that the absence should be provided at least 10 days in advance. That helps us when we're doing public notice that we usually, if we're getting out the weekly calendar and those sorts of things, it's helpful to have at least seven to 10 days of notice. And so, or there's an emergency deemed excusable by the county manager and the council chair. So that's just how it's written. You can, of course, change those provisions however you want. But that's, that's where this section comes from, is our conversation last week.
Hey. Ask the Maggi, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. So I just want to focus really in, in one area. So first of all, I think this is really very important for transparency and basically forgive, providing a work product for taxpayer supplied salaries. You know, that no school or business works like we do. And, you know, with elected offices, it's somewhat problematic. But there are lots of examples where elected officers have taken upon it them, on themselves to really define basically this work ethic and the responsibility to the voting electorate. And again, the voting electorate needs to know if someone's not working. What I really disagree with here or find very problematic, and it goes to some of what Lindsay just mentioned about weekends and other off-normal work week meetings that may have been scheduled. I think it really boils down to this. What's being, what's unexcused and what's not? Most of the board memberships that I have, they actually do take a roll call. And they actually report in the minutes when there's an unexcused absence. I think the public would expect that. Having 30 days or four weeks rather consecutive, I mean, that, that is just such a huge gaping hole. I mean, you literally could miss 40 weeks of work. But if you did it cumulatively instead of consecutively, you wouldn't fall subject to this rule. I would really prefer that it be broken down into meetings missed or in the alternative cumulative days missed as a more appropriate standard. Both for transparency, again, the work. We owe work to the public for our salary. And things are just way too loose right now. So I disagree with the, I think it's stated as four consecutive weeks. I think that, that just is a huge gaping hole that you could drive the Titanic through and would focus instead of a cumulative days of, and what we're talking about are unexcused absences. Not just absences, but those that are unexcused. So someone who's ill, takes a vacation, you know, all those things would be excused. And so they wouldn't fall subject to this rule. Anyway, those are my general comments.
And, and I actually, I think that's a better idea as well. But it also says council meetings. And counselors are assigned to other committees. And I don't know whether the council wants to consider that. I mean, we have a responsibility to also attend these other committees that at the first of the year, we sign up for, or each counselor is signed up for. It would be, you know, I, I would throw that up for discussion too. And I, and if we did talk about meetings missed, how many meetings are we talking about? Consecutive, I guess consecutive, consecutively, how many? Is it like three out of six? Or, and, and then start that, start it rolling again? After three you missed out of six, then you, or? I, I'm not sure how we would do that, but I just, I throw that out there for discussion.
Well, and I don't want to increase the administrative overhead of even keeping track of this. I think we, and I really want to focus on cumulative, not consecutive, as you just stated as well. You know, I don't want to burden the county manager with something really hard. But between the county manager and the chair, I think you could at least easily keep track of the cumulative days missed from our unnoticed meetings. You know, getting into committees, I think the individual committees, at least some of them, keep track of that. And perhaps we could reach out to them and say, please, let the chair and county manager know if a counselor is not participating in the, their assigned position, something like that.
Chair, this is Taylor Holick. May I raise a, a point?
Yes.
I guess one thing I would observe in response to Counselor Medgee's questions and these, the, this language that's been added is that the state law relief that's referenced in this paragraph has its own elements that will need to be satisfied independently and of whatever the council's standard is that it's adopting here. And I believe off the top of my head, the elements are essentially ab, you know, failed to fulfill the duties for a certain, I believe it's 30 days and out of the county. That's how I, I read the statute. So whatever the outcome of the council's discussion here is on the unexcused absent, absent question, it won't change the relief that's available under state law that's also referenced in the same paragraph.
So I'm going to read the RCW that we were given. It's not very long. And it's referenced as RCW 3616125. Elected officials abandonment of responsibility, declaratory judgment, compensation denied during abandonment. The county legislative authority of a county may cause an action to be filed at Superior Court of that county for a declaratory judgment finding that the county elected official has abandoned his or her responsibilities by being absent from the county and failing to perform his or her official duties for a period of at least 30 consecutive days, but not including, one, absences approved by county legislative court authority, or two, absences the county official is no longer eligible, excuse me, absences arising from leave taken for legitimate medical or disability purposes. If such a declaratory judgment is issued, the county official is no longer eligible to receive compensation from the date of a declaratory judgment is issued until the court issues a subsequent declaratory judgment finding that the county official has commenced performing his or her responsibilities. So I have a question for you, Taylor. Does that and, you know, absence from the county and failing to report his or her, or, or report for his or her official duties? Both of those? And how do you, how do you, how are you going to know that somebody's absent from the county? Speaking to you, Taylor.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Chair. I was on mute and struggling to get off of it. That's a good question. I, I read those two things as, as, and as, as showing two factors. I'm sure there's the argument that could be raised on both sides of that.
So that's a. Taylor, Madam Chair, I think that goes to the issue that I was talking about, the sticky point with elected officials. And I would absolutely say that state law would preempt in that area regarding declaratory judgment to either one, be removed from office or lose their compensation. Nevertheless, I think we can have somewhat of a stricter or better defined policy that wouldn't have the removal from office or loss of salary issue that state law would preempt. I think we can write this in parallel and have our own Park County rules that may be tighter in some respect. But I, obviously, I don't think we can touch what the state has defined. And that stands as a bulwark behind whatever we do as well.
I would agree with that completely. And having reference in this code to that state code that you cited in the RCWs is, is really, really good. That is a very extreme action that is taken. And we can take actions that are described later in our own code here that are less stringent, but get the point across to the counselor who is in violation of attendance and participation that we envision as essential. So I think, let's not lose track either back in A, up at the, or the first paragraph, I'm sorry, of item five. There is a really good list there of what constitutes expectations of the office. And it goes beyond Tuesday and Wednesday meetings to include committees, boards, and commissions to which the counselor is appointed to represent the council. So that is very good. And we can continue to reference back to paragraph one, because that's a good list. Thank you.
And, and so they, this would just actually make our, any, let's see, repercussions from these absences is, is merely to state that they're unexcused absences on the attendance? Is, is that?
So based upon what I'm hearing, the, the direction of this discussion going, of having a heightened standard beyond state law with state law sort of serving as a final backstop. So what we could do is have provision there, a certain amount of cumulative absences for which then it would constitute a violation of this code of conduct. And as you can see from section six below, what we have drafted here is that the council action could include public admonishment, public resolution of censure with removal of the violator from all committees to which they're representing the county. So that would be the violation of this heightened standard. Of course, the state law provision would remain. And as, you know, Taylor described, it would be difficult in certain circumstances to prove depending upon the information at hand. But that state law standard would always be there as long as that statute is in place.
So I, Madam Chair, I think Lindsay has it exactly right. I want to just make a specific recommendation and then we can discuss that perhaps. So the first sentence of that last paragraph in section five, where it says unexcused for four or more consecutive weeks, I would simply change that to read 30 or more cumulative council meetings.
30 meetings? Within a 12-month period of time?
Oh. That's a lot of meetings to miss, 30 meetings.
Well, it's a lot more meetings to miss if you're missing 30 consecutive days or 30 consecutive.
No, it isn't. We have two, four, six, eight meetings in a month unless you count all the other committee meetings. But the council meetings are normally Tuesday and Wednesday and every, or. But the council meetings are normally Tuesday and Wednesday and every, or well, not even six. We've got two Tuesday meetings and four council meetings, that's six meetings. If they, if they miss 30, that's a lot of months to be gone.
Well, that's exactly the discussion I was hoping to generate. So I was thinking of any more meetings per day, but I think what you've stated is more accurate.
So are you still proposing 30 consecutive meetings?
No, I think it should be far less, the way you just restated it.
Right. So what are we talking then? What's, what would you suggest? Is it eight? Or six? Six? That would be, that would fit for the 30, for us, for the usually scheduled work sessions and council duties in a month. We have two Tuesdays and four Wednesdays. So that. Unless we go back up to paragraph one, which says that attendance at all council meetings, including, and then it lists our total responsibilities for meetings there. That's almost like a definition of a council meeting, not just a. That's true. Right, that's correct. So, but we're going to have different, each counselor is kind of going to have different responsibilities. Some of these, some of these committees meet once a month. Some of these committees meet twice a month, some. You know, I don't think most of them meet weekly, but so. Well, as a consequence, Chair, do you feel that it should be referencing just the Tuesday and Wednesday meetings? Because if so, it could be a very small number. Right, I, I, it may be better to do that, although I, and because it creates, I think it creates quite an administrative burden to find the absence of these other committees. So I, I would, I would take comments about it, you know, what? I, I would suggest that it's no more than six and really have them be our basic council meetings where we need a quorum, et cetera. So, but I would, I would open that for discussion, actually.
So based on that conversation, I, I would agree with six, but it, but it just referred to our work sessions and council time and Tuesday council meetings that the committees, boards, commissions, you know, that, that we leave that out of there. So we don't have that administrative overhead. If we find out that someone's missing all of their committee meetings, we can always take a vote and replace that person on that committee. Of course, as you pointed out, Council, Madam Chair, that, that may be what they're seeking by missing all the meetings. They just want relief from the committee. But any case, I, I would neck it down to our work sessions, council time and Tuesday council meetings and set that number at six. Cumulative, not, not consecutive.
Not consecutive, but cumulative, correct? Yeah.
And so specify. Within a 12-month period? Or within what timeframe, 12 months?
I was thinking for the calendar year.
Yeah, fiscal?
Either one, it could, it better, it's easier to have it as a calendar year, January to January.
And our terms start in January, so. Okay. Any other comments of counselors? Silence, okay.
I think we can scroll down.
Okay.
And that's it.
Okay. Do, okay.
So. Go ahead. To get a, a copy of the new changes and then discuss it at council time next week?
That, that sounds okay to me. How about you folks? You okay with it, counselors? Yeah, looks like it.
I have a clarifying question.
Chair, this is Taylor Hollick, I just wanted to, oh, I'm sorry.
Taylor, I may have the same question that you had or comment. If you're changing the absences line to the six cumulative, that no longer correlates to the declaratory judgment for, you know, vacating the office. So that'll need to be adjusted. That penalty cannot correlate to the six cumulative. So that'll need to be separated out and that conversation about whether or not to include the declaratory judgment piece and that RCW in the, the code should also be a discussion.
Yeah, so the way that I will have to draft it is that the standard of the six meetings will have to fall under violations of the code of conduct in section six below it. And then the, I planned on including for drafting purposes, just that the statutory standard remains. As, you know, it, it's there, we can include reference to it. But there won't be discussion of the declaratory judgment because that's all contained within the, the state law. So, and you're right, the, a violation of the six will likely not amount to the, the state declaratory judgment. It, it could if it amounts to 30 days worth of meetings and that person is outside of the county. But that would be a separate consideration.
You know, I'm sorry, I just had another thought and that is I could imagine down the road some argument on whether or not an absence was listed as excused or not. Perhaps we should state excused by whom? Is it by the chair? Is it by the chair and the county manager? Whatever, let's, let's specify. I, I wouldn't mind seeing it as, as both because then there is clarity. That's what we're always seeking is clarity in these kinds of things.
So the language that's in here right now, is it an absentee is considered excuse if notice is provided 10 days in advance or if the emergency is deemed excusable by the county manager and the council chair?
Oh, sorry, where is that?
It's in the second paragraph. And so if the absence is noted 10 days in advance, it will automatically on the minutes be shown as excused. And then if there's an emergency, then both the chair and county manager would say, we acknowledge that, you know, council member Smith is absent and their absence is excused. And then it would be so noted in the minutes.
Hmm, a paragraph.
However, yeah, go ahead, Counselor Bowman.
Paragraph two leaves a little bit of room there for misunderstanding. This is when a counselor anticipates an absence, hopefully 10 days in advance, but maybe not possible, maybe 10 minutes in advance and just sends a, some kind of a communication to those two. Let's just be clear on whether the, the, the chair and the county manager approve it as an unexcused absence or not, so that the counselor knows. For example, I have to go to the dentist this afternoon again. I assume that that would be excused, but if I, if I, if we had a meeting, I'd like to know whether it is or not. Because if it's not, maybe I'd want to reschedule. So, you know, I, I think just clarity there would be really good.
Chair.
Counselor. I just have one thing, I think, and this maybe goes a little bit to Counselor Bowerman's point, but I mean, I think we have to remember in having these conversations that if a counselor misses a meeting, it doesn't mean that they're not doing the work. It doesn't mean that they're not looking at council time materials, watching meetings, talking to staff, catching up with the county manager. So I think the idea just to connect the fact that if someone misses a meeting, that they're not doing the work, I think gets off on a wrong path. So I think that could be a conversation that also should take place. Because work sessions and historically council time has not been a meeting where the council has done a lot of action. We have done a lot over the last year and a half for sure. But typically it's not been a meeting where we take a lot of official action. So I just wanted to add that to the conversation. I know meetings that I've missed, I have done that, I have talked to staff, I have listened to the meeting, I've watched the work sessions. So because someone misses a meeting generally, it doesn't mean that they're not doing the work. So I just wanted to add that to the conversation.
That, yeah, I, that sounds really good, but not true. I, I just don't, you need to be.
Sorry, you're saying that, you're saying that if Counselor misses a meeting, they can't go back and watch the meeting and get the material.
Can we have an orderly discussion because I want to respond as well? So could the Chair have the floor?
Yeah, yes, I, I have the floor and I would like to continue speaking without being interrupted. What I'm saying is, is that by all means, it does mean that you're working if you are at the meeting. Even if, if you are absent from the meeting, it may not say you're not doing the work, but it does say that you're absent from the meeting and that's what we're talking about is absences. We have no guarantee that a counselor will be doing the work. And, and that is why we're putting these in the rules and procedures. So I completely disagree with what you've stated there, but it doesn't mean that we aren't doing the work. It most certainly does. Because that's, we, we represent the people, we work as a council, as, as a, a team of counselors that represent people in the county, we each have a district or, for me, countywide. So it is a responsibility and that is one of our responsibilities to be at the meetings, regardless of whether you talk to staff, look at the meeting online or whatever, you're not there to vote. So, and, and it doesn't matter if we have action or not. Our council time is a time like we're doing this kind of thing. It's important work that we do and work sessions are important information for us to get. And we all should be getting it at the same time and assured that we are all getting it. So Counselor Medvedje.
Uh, thank you. So I want to add some of the same thoughts. Like, one of the things that I, I'm hoping that we can continue to strive for is a collaborative collegial working environment. The public has five counselors and they're entitled to the thought processes and the input of all of them, not just some of them. And that's regardless of your political beliefs, your political party. So when you miss discussions, when you miss meetings, and we have so precious time, limited time where we can all meet together because of the public meeting rules, where we can collaborate. So if you're missing meetings, you're missing those discussions, you're missing the give and take. And if we all have open minds, which we should, you're not learning from the other counselor's point of view, besides missing the votes. So, yeah, coordinating with staff is important, coordinating with the manager is important. Having, doing your own research is important. But as a council, we need to be collaborative and collegial and accepting of minority opinions, accepting and listening to the views of our colleagues. So missing meetings on a whim or caprice shouldn't be accepted by the public nor us.
Thank you. Other comments? I, I have a further comment about the third paragraph and RCW thirty-six sixteen, one twenty-five. That law does not specify part-time or full-time. It just states a law. And I actually believe that we can go, we, we can apply thirty-six sixteen, one twenty-five regardless. It doesn't specify. So I think the 30 consecutive date, I think we should write it as the law states it. And, and I do believe that it can be enforced. Taylor, I think you were going to say something earlier, I'm sorry. The discussion sort of took off here.
Yes, Chair, I was actually headed in a different direction, back to a different subject. Is now appropriate time to head back?
Maybe not. Are there further comments on, on this third paragraph of absence by county counselors? Nope, okay, Taylor, go ahead.
All right, Counselor, or excuse me, Chair, I just wanted to revisit a comment I made earlier regarding whether the council should reconvene in a public session when there is no action. And I'm, I would like to further look at that, but for the time being, I recommend reconvening in public session, even where there is no action to adjourn the meeting. Because an executive session should happen during the meeting. And so I'm, I want to look at whether there's a way to to pursue the practice that the council discussed earlier, but for now, I recommend going back into the public meeting and adjouring the meeting even when there is no action.
Okay, that's good. Let's, let's do get a real true definition of that and find out if we need to. But I, that makes sense, logical sense, that it is part of the meeting. And, you know, sometimes it's a, it's a hassle to go back and sign in. However, if that is what we are to do, we need to do that. So let's check that out more fully and, and keep an eye then on that particular piece in our rules and procedures, okay?
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Other comments or questions? I would just add that if that is not a requirement by the state or an RCW, let's not do it because it is probably something that the public really does not care about, except when there is action. Right, let's just, I, I would agree, let's check that RCW out. And if we are legally required to do that, we'll do it. If not, we'll only do it when we have action. So, but let's do verify, check that out. So we're abiding by the RCW. Any other comments on this? Guess not, we'll, we'll see the, the change in any of the wording then and view that next week. Is that okay?
Yeah, and I, I do want to thank Lindsay for all the work on this. I think it's right on target, thank you, and great discussion today. Yeah.
Okay, yes, moving on to new business, permit center update. We have a present.
So Counselor, it's my pleasure to introduce you to April Firth. If you have not met her, she is our new permit center manager. She's been here a few months, I always forget how long so I'll let her share that. But I just wanted to give her an opportunity to share with you what changes have happened in the permit center, some efficiencies, and then some information that she's getting out to the community right now. So April, you can go ahead.
Awesome, thank you. Good morning, everybody. I, this is a presentation, so I've met the goals that I had set for myself. I started in February, I had some pretty crazy goals, I've met those goals and, for now, I mean, I have new goals. But what this is, is this is my community education or outreach program. I am asking contractors if I can teach their permitting folks how to get a permit through our system as quickly as possible. And very important to me, because it does make, if we're all looking at the same thing, and you talk a lot about clarity, Counselor Bowman, Bowerman, sorry. And that's what I'm trying to teach them. I'm trying to teach them what we're looking at and have them look at the same thing so that the application go through pretty quickly. So this is just a quick presentation that I've made for them and then I have questions and answers afterward and on my last slide too, just the difference between, between February to today. You can go through that one still. So the current permit center lifecycle is four weeks. We are four weeks intake to issuance and we have been now for three weeks in a row. So my goal was Labor Day. And that was pretty, that was a pretty lofty goal. When I got here, it took eight weeks to get a appointment. And it, it took 13 weeks to process a permit through the permit center. So now it takes one week to get an appointment and I've held that for over two months now. And then four weeks intake to issuance. So for the permit center, now there are a lot of things that happen before the permit center, but for the permit center, intake to issuance, four weeks and one week to get that appointment. So basically you apply online and you schedule an appointment. You follow the permit center checklist and submit the paper documents at your one-hour appointment. So you get an appointment, it's four weeks later, and you meet with a permit deck in person to go over your application. you get an appointment, it's four weeks later, and you meet with a permit tech in person to go over your application. This has probably, this has helped, um, tremendously, uh, just the back and forth of an email trying to get the permit to be taken in, um, was at probably at least a three-week process. So this has brought it down to one hour. It also has allowed me to streamline the process and, um, one hour is what we get. And so I can, I can better understand, uh, productivity. I came from retail and everything in retail was productivity and we did it to the fifteen minutes. And we did it to the square foot. You know, you had to basically pay your rent. So, um, that is where my background is and I brought that into the permit center. Um, then you get to check CCLMS for status changes and respond promptly to revisions requested by staff. If they check this often, and especially when I'm talking to people who actually permit for a living, uh, if they check this every day, they can respond quickly. Um, sometimes a revision might be requested. If someone doesn't understand that they should be checking the system, it might be a week before they see that a revision was requested. So the sooner they get that, the better. And I've also told my team, if they request a revision, they actually need to call, uh, the customer as well. And then, um, a lot of, not a lot, but things that can hold it up at the end is Clark Regional Wastewater and Public Health sign-offs. So, um, those have to be done before the permit can be issued. So I just make sure, um, when I'm teaching this class, I make sure that they have that in line, uh, and that they have the contractor and CECL information. This part is where I go over use your online resources, and I go into this more in depth with them, but, um, you know, the resources they could use, where to go, uh, where the checklist are available, and I'm going through the system live with them at this point. Um, plot plan requirements, I put a lot of focus on plot plan requirements, uh, because it's probably one of the hardest things for people to understand. And then, um, I show them, the next point is I show them maps online and how to get all the information to go on their plot plan. And then to make an appointment with us, where they can ask questions, um, how they can register for CCLMS account, and any, and if they have any problems with their account, where they can go. I have some do's and don'ts. Uh, make sure to use the plot plan checklist for reference. Uh, do request a phone call. So a lot of times, and coming from outside of the county and outside of permitting, they use some language that I think, um, the average taxpayer probably doesn't know. And so I tell them if they're confused, make sure to reach out and, uh, a permit tech will call you back. Uh, the biggest thing, because there has been changes, um, since COVID, do arrive on time for your appointments. Uh, because you only get an hour. So if they're fifteen minutes or twenty minutes late, now they just reduce their time by that amount. Because I have someone coming in, remember, it's all about productivity. So I have someone coming in right afterward. Uh, don't pay for permits until they are sure that you, they are required for the project. You'd be surprised how often this happens. But, um, refunds are not easy. So, uh, one of the things I'm trying to teach them is wait and make sure you need it before you pay. Um, don't assume that the requirements listed on the checklist are not requested by your permit tech. Because we use the same checklist. The checklist that they, that I showed them how to get is the checklist we use to bring it in. So if we're saying that we need it, then we need it. And then don't miss the appointment. Because that is taking it from someone else. And when I first started, um, the appointment, missed appointments was twenty-five percent. Twenty-five percent of the appointments were missed, which was pushing my timelines out because you can't get someone in in that amount of time. So one of the, actually, I think the first thing I did was implement, um, uh, email where we would remind people of their appointments. And that reduced it to like five percent. And it's been that way ever since. So we're still doing it. So from February to now, so I started on February sixteenth, um, and it was eight weeks to even get your appointment in. It's one week now. Um, two weeks to answer incoming phone and email messages. We get a hundred and fifty emails and phone calls a day. And, um, that's hard to account for time. So right now, we, um, we get them through one day and we're actually answering them live. So the, the question and answers, the general phone messages, those, we're answering them live now, which was not happening during COVID, which is pretty exciting. People were really surprised for the first two weeks of that happening, that somebody was answering the phone. Um, in February, we were close to the public. Uh, we are in-person appointments five days a week. Uh, the average permit lifecycle time was twenty weeks and it is four weeks today. And we've maintained that since Labor Day. And that is the very condensed version of what I teach to, um, local contractors and their permitting. So like I have one next week with about eight people in an office. Do you have any questions for me about the permit center?
Are there questions of the council for April?
I, I would, uh, offer the first one.
All right, Council.
First of all, thank you so much. You know, this, uh, reflects a sea change. And so thanks to Kathleen as well for selecting you. Uh, and you know, anecdotally, I think, uh, Clark County permitting had probably the worst reputation of any permitting department um, in the area. Everyone dreaded it. Uh, so this is a sea change and these numbers are dramatic. And certainly we're still under pandemic conditions, so the challenges still remain. You know, the culture of customer service is what needed to change and getting consistency into the requirements. Uh, but getting, you know, whether it's a homeowner or a developer, getting these timelines down to a reasonable level, that's what costs everyone time and frustration, especially during this period of of supply chain issues and material dramatically going up week to week. Um, not only the frustration and trying to get a permit, but watching the costs go through the roof. Uh, but anecdotally, I'm hearing it. You know, my, my own neighbor, one of my neighbors is building a home. He's been in the process for the last year and a half. He is giving me positive reviews of what you are doing. Uh, and I'm kind of hearing that universally as opposed to all the critics and complaints and please help me with the permitting department. I'm now getting positive comments. So thank you so much for all your work, uh, and all you're doing and all that you're going to do. Uh, so my question is, what do you need? Uh, what do you need from us, uh, to continue to improve the process? Uh, you know, everything from software, being able to, um, kind of link systems, uh, especially for stormwater and other uh, plans that I heard about earlier on. Is there anything you need from us, uh, to to make additional changes that are positive?
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Um, and you know, the county has been great about anything that I need and supportive of anything that I've needed or asked for, I've been given to make, you know, once you and that's the way it was in retail. Once you start proving that you can make results happen, you know, then you start getting resources. So no, I, I at this time I don't. Um, the e-plan review would, is going to be great and it will make the process even better. Um, but it, but this is, it's interesting because this has taught me lessons. Going to appointments has taught me that even with the e-plan review, I think that I will stick with an appointment base, even if it's just teams appointments. They won't be in person anymore, but they, but teams appointments. Um, just for that interaction, I think that the customer needs that interaction with all the questions they have. But I don't need anything right now. Thank, thank you. I wish I did. I would ask for it.
I have a comment if I may.
Council.
Um, April, I, I'm going to ask a favor of you. And here it is. Um, when you are bringing change to the county to the extent that you are, I know that there is a, there's a team of people who are coming along with you to make that change. Maybe everybody isn't happy because it is change and we know the nature of change. But for those who are coming along and are just a vibrant part of your team, please say thank you from the council. Because we appreciate everything that you're doing. And I echo everything that Counselor Medvigi was just saying. I, I have, um, have the pleasure of serving on a couple or more economic development, uh, organizations in the community. And after your term was very short, I don't know, maybe March or April at the, at the very latest, our county manager provided a listing of the changes that you were making. And some of the people on those economic development groups were kind of hung up in yesteryear and were still talking about that. So I pull out that sheet from, from Kathleen and just would go down what those changes are. And I said, please, when you experience the permit process now, report back to the organization. And they did. And it really has changed in this community totally for the better. And we're very, very appreciative. And we, it's not just the council, as Counselor Medvigi said, it is the community because we need that in order to have the growth, have the housing, have the jobs for, from the uh, businesses that are being permitted. So it's, it's very good. And I, I promise you that now I will take any updated list that you provide of the changes that you're making in terms of uh, the timing and the process that you wish for people to participate in. I'll take it to those organizations and use it every chance that I get in the same way that you do. So that we can continue to get the word out on the good work that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. My team and you, and I didn't say it yet, but, uh, I, that was probably one of the biggest surprises was I have some, I have a twenty-year, I have a thirty-year, I have a sixteen. I mean, I've got some time with people here. And one of the biggest surprises was uh, that they all have adapted to the change and were very open to it. Um, and I was surprised by that because I was making changes and it was a lot. And sometimes they didn't work and we had the backtrack. And they were still, you know, on board. And, uh, that was amazing. I, I think the biggest part of that was they had ideas. They all had ideas of how things could get better. I just, I just listened to them. I didn't know about permitting when I came in here. I ran fifty million dollar Lowe's and Macy's stores, you know, um, but they had great ideas and I was just able to implement them. And I think that the biggest part too was I implemented them, I implemented them one at a time to make sure that it worked or didn't work. You know, I didn't try to do too much at once. I would set a goal, I'd hit that goal, I'd go to the next one. And we just, little bites, little bites at a time.
Well done. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm sure. Counselors. Uh, um, yeah, I'll just, uh, echo what my fellow counselors have already said this morning and, and goes to your leadership style that these veterans have come along with you and, uh, and just really, really appreciate all the work and not just the work, but the results that you're getting. And it, uh, we're seeing it, and it's not personally seen it because my, my email box is not full of people who've had permitting problems recently. So um, so that's already measurable from our perspective. So, so I just wanted to reiterate everything that's been said and, and thank you so much for, for the work so far. And it does say a lot about your leadership style that you're going to get these folks to go along with you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? I have some. I, I, you know, how, I, I would just repeat everything that the council has just stated. That when I first came to the council, this was the number one complaint that I had over and over and over. And it was quite frustrating to read some of the emails that we would get. And it just didn't make sense that we, that it couldn't be worked out. But April, you've done a fantastic job and your team as well. I, it does speak to your leadership's style. I agree. Um, and taking ideas, et cetera, from these thirty, twenty, sixteen-year staff member, members that, you know, is so rewarding to them as well, that they've been doing this all the, all these years. And here are their ideas and you try, you implementing them. So I, I just, I can't thank you enough because it, it is so important. Uh, and we did, just like other counselors, you know, you'd hear from developers or, or even homeowners. Probably more so even from some homeowners that were very frustrated and but developers for sure would say, don't go to Clark County. If you're going to build anything, go to some other city because it's so hard to get through the permitting process. So I, I, it sounds like we've got a unanimous, um, praise for you. And just thank you so much. And when and if you do need, uh, things from us, please do make it known. I know our county manager is very, uh, happy with the results of this as well. And so, uh, we will have an open, open ears and hopefully hands and minds to whatever, uh, you might require of us in the future.
Thank you.
Chair, if I can just add, um, the council will be seeing, um, during the annual budget process, some requests regarding the CCLMS, which includes e-plan review. Um, as you remember, last year, I did not recommend anything until that there was a thorough review of that prod, that project because it has been going on for quite some time and we didn't have an end in sight. So, um, IT has been working with, um, the key stakeholders and it'll be coming through as an IT uh, package that includes the four, I think there's four remaining elements that need to be implemented. So that will be coming through in our work session for the annual budget here next month.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Well, uh, not hearing any. Uh, thank you very much again, April. Wonderful to get a positive report. So uh, we will say goodbye. So, um, the next thing on our agenda, council reports. Do we have any reports from counselors? Work session requests?
There are no work session requests today.
Okay, uh, policy issues. Any report on that, Lindsay?
Nothing else this morning. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are going to go into executive session. One pending litigation for ten minutes. One potential litigation for twenty minutes. Uh, our attorney will be there. Will we have action after?
Chair, we will not have action after, uh, but I do recommend that you reconvene in public session.
Okay, we will come back to public session and it looks like it's, uh, twenty minutes, thirty minutes. Is that correct? About thirty minutes.
Yes, and I would also just, um, make a note for the record that this is an amended executive session based on
Yes.
So we will note that in the minute, one of the executive sessions was removed.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I, I forgot to mention, one was eliminated. So, okay, let's go sign into our executive session. And I'll see you on the other side. In, uh, council time from our, uh, executive session and we are adjourned. Thank you.